I think at this time, we're ready for the budget presentations and we'll start off with the library, right? Ms. Betsy Gilbert will start off.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for giving me a few minutes to talk about the library budget. Glad to be here. And thanks to the school district for sharing their podium and for all the support they've given us over many, many years. I keep telling people, this is the 17th time I've done this, so hopefully this time I'll get it right. So, we've recently completed a five-year long-range plan, and that's guided our budget process, and I'll mention that as we go along. Let's see if I can do this. Matt showed me how. Got it. So, some discussion about some ongoing challenges. These aren't unique to us. They're pretty standard to everybody who's dealing with a budget these years. We have our retirement contributions, which did actually go down a tiny bit this year. Rising in healthcare costs, the New York State property tax cap that we work under, and Monroe County library system, which I'll talk about more later. Increase in minimum wage. We do have a number of minimum wage employees or near minimum wage. We hire a big group of high school kids. They're awesome. Technology costs. More and more of our services are delivered through technology. And changes in the Fairport parenting community, mainly the aging of the community and the fact that we need to skew our services so that they're serving more people like me and less of the not last. We're still doing bang-up business in preschool So, this is a summary of the proposed budget. Just to go down the lines, there'll be more information about these as we go along, but salaries and benefits are a big part of our budget. We're a service organization, so salaries make up a lot of what we do. Library materials, of course. We have books and DVDs and all those good things. Occupancy costs, that's the cost of our building, the rent, the utilities, those insurance, those kinds of costs. Monroe County library system, which again, I told you I'd talk about more later. Equipment, professional fees, and everything else. A just rundown of our budget over the last many years and how it's changed. We got a bigger increase this year than we have in the past few years, and we'll talk about that, So, personnel expenses, professional, those are our librarians. And clerical, we have a large clerical staff. Those are the people you see when you check your books out and the people that process the books to get them ready to use. Pages, those are also at the checkout desk, but the high school kids who put the books back on the shelves. Custodial and aides are typically the people in the children's room who help you with the kids. And the benefits breakdown, our biggest courses, health insurance, followed by New York State Retirement and Social Security. So, our revenue sources beyond taxes, which is by far our biggest revenue, is fines, fees, and printing. If you have an overdue fine, or you print something on one of our copiers or printers, we collect bits of money for that, and it adds up. Payment in lieu of taxes and gifts is a small part of our budget. We get about $10,000 in state aid. The bulk of state aid to public libraries goes to library systems, not directly to individual libraries. And MCLS Contract for Services, that was a special project that ended, so that aid is no, or that income is no longer there. And a tiny little bit of interest. And then every year, we look at our fund balance, and based on the numbers and how we're planning for the future, we use part of our fund balance to make our budget whole. This is the calculation for this year's tax cap, and I'm not going to go into the details. The main point I want to make is that if you look at the bottom two lines, we're requesting a $25,000 increase in taxes this year, and our allowable increase was close to 76. So, we're well within the tax cap. Fund balance. We do a lot of planning at the library for the future, and the fund balance is part of what we use to do that planning. I'm sure most of you know that we had a major renovation two and a half years ago and upgraded everything. So, now we're looking at the future and thinking, at what point are we going to have to replace the HVAC system, the servers for the computers, those kinds of things. And those numbers are set aside so that when that happens, it won't impact the operating budget. The money will be there. So, capital is building and systems. Employee separation, we've got an aging employment base, and as people retire, we'll need to have separations. We don't want that money to impact our operating. Library enrichment, these are actually gifts that we've been given over the years, and we account for that separately, so that if we have something really special, we want to do some art project or something that's out of the ordinary, we have money that's been donated that we can use for that. Technology improvements. When we renovated, we completely upgraded all our technology, our servers, our wiring, everything else. And we know that that's an ongoing project, so we've been two and a half years, we figure, between five and 10 years, we'll have to replace our servers, so we'll be ready for that. Repairs and replacement, again, that's sort of the capital thing, systems in the building as they wear out. And cash flow, we try to set aside about a quarter to a third of our annual budget, because we start our fiscal year in July, and the taxes come in later than that, so we want to make sure that we're good on the money we need to spend. And then we do have some, our appropriation for this year, and then a amount that's not appropriate, not set aside for any particular amount. A little service data. You can see our circulation is increasing. We had a big drop in 2015, and that's when we were in our temporary location, so everything tanked that year, but we recovered. And I'm happy to say that since we moved in, back into our renovated facility, we've been the highest circulating library in Monroe County. Circulation of, thank you. Circulation of digital materials continues to go up. It was going up like gangbusters the first few years. It's kind of leveled off, but it's still increasing. And interestingly enough, you guys are amongst the largest user of digital media in Monroe County. That's another thing that we're often at the highest point of. And visitors to the library, you can see we have a lot of people coming in and out of our doors, which is an awesome thing. Little programming data. We do a bang-up job in what they call early literacy programs, but everybody else calls it storytime. And they're planned specifically to integrate early literacy skills into their programming, so that you're not only just entertaining the children and telling them stories, but they're learning things about literacy. And the whole children's room is set up so that there are toys that are interactive to work with parents, so that they develop these skills. If you ever want to be overwhelmed with cuteness, just come to the library when storytime's letting out. It's like adorableness on steroids. And we, and that, that demand is not going down. It is increasing. People just love our storytimes. And then separately from that, we have programs for children. These are programs that we do for kids that are not storytimes. They tend to be more school-age children rather than the preschool, and we have them in the summer and school vacations. We're just about to hit the ground running with summer, which is by far our busiest season, by far. So, if you want to have a good time, come to the library this summer. We've got so much going on, and programs just about every day. Programs for teens. Teens don't typically flock to the library the way preschoolers do, but we do get them for SAT tests, practice, for babysitting skills, for chess programs, some things that are just fun. And we have like a teen tech tutor program where teens come in, and they're available for drop-in, usually seniors to come in and learn about how to use their phone, or how to download a book, or how to do all sorts of things on their technology. Programs for adults, those are things like our concert series, and our travel logs, and our book discussions, and they're, they can be historical or educational, and we intend to increase that number to reach out more to the senior population. I mentioned the Monroe County library system. Just a little bit more information about them. They are our infrastructure. It's where most of the state funding goes, and it's pretty transparent to the general public, but it's how we get our internet, how we get our library catalog, how we get our Wi-Fi, delivery, daily delivery of materials between libraries. And we give about $67,000 a year to the Monroe County library system. The rest of their funding is from New York State. And I saw an estimate recently of how much it would cost to duplicate those services if we did them individually, and it was like $500,000. So, it's a great, great bargain, and it's, it really gives us the ability to do a whole lot more than we could do without them. And we had a lot of, I've been doing this forever, and when I started out, it was date-do-stamps. So, I've seen the whole library world change exponentially, and what I can tell you is that we can do so much more than we ever could before, thanks to technology. We have, you know, you can do a whole lot with library services from your home. You can download books in Italy if you wanted to. So, we are actively teaching people in the community how to use technology, how to use the technology that we offer. We have classes in Excel, and Word, and eBooks. You know, basic, we're not going into depth, but we are helping people get started in their technology. And people will come in, just walk up to the reference desk and say, "Help me download this book." We do that all the time. So, we have a wireless network. We just recently upgraded it to three times the capacity that it had before. When we renovated, all our tables now, or we had three plugs before, now they're all over the place. So, you can plug your device in anywhere. We have wireless printing. You can print from your phone. We have scanning to email, flash drive, fax, the cloud. You can do all sorts of things remotely. Computers with office software. I have one person that comes in a lot who needs to use Publisher. She doesn't want to buy a Publisher, so she uses our computer because we have it. Remote access, like Consumer Reports. You all can use Consumer Reports electronically through the library at home. Do all your research from there. So, there's a whole lot of stuff that is technology-based and pretty awesome. So, library services, we, books. We have books, lots and lots of books, all sorts of collections. They're digital, they're paper, they're, they're physical. We have programs for all ages. And like I said, early childhood literacy. One area that we do a lot with is workforce development. We partnered with Rochester Works back in '08 when the recession hit, and started doing programs with them, and we keep waiting for the demand to go away, but it has not. So, there was one last night, and it's resume writing, and interviewing, and networking, and all those kinds of skills that you use to find a job. Technology for public use and training, and then all these things that I've talked about before. And then, one thing I'm very proud of is that we didn't have this before, but we do now, a very comfortable library. Tables, chairs, quiet spaces, spaces you can talk, spaces you can meet, all sorts of ways that you can use the library to suit your needs. So, this is an estimate based on an estimated tax rate, so don't hold me to this, but just for the purposes of illustration, we believe at this point what we're requesting in our taxes would be for a home assessed at $200,000, approximately $160.50 a year. And that is my part. I've brought a few program flyers, and they're up on the table outside if anybody's interested. And other than that, please come and see us, and come and spend the summer with us. It'll be fun. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you, Ms. Gilbert, for that comprehensive review of your library budget. A lot of great things happening, and it complements wonderful things we're doing here, so appreciate the service. My name is Brett Provenzano, and I am the proud superintendent of the Fairport Central School District. Certainly, this has been an incredibly challenging budget season. There's been ebbs and flows to it. Things that, you know, we've, we've really been trying to focus on this past year, we've been able to get at, which I'm going to be speaking to in just a bit, but I appreciate the advocacy, the points of advocacy that, that were shared this morning, or, excuse me, this, earlier this evening in the public comments. You know, we have high expectations of our schools. The Board of Education has, you know, the highest of expectations and a great commitment to make sure that we're giving our students the very best. This budget season was about maintaining high-quality standards and student-centered experiences here in Fairport. It was about cost containment and making sure that we're being responsive and responsible to our students, giving them the very best, but also to our community as a whole. We're also continuing to respond to declining enrollment, which we are obligated to do to make sure that responsibility piece of the community is, is being played out. A major theme that we talked about this past year was the pathway to sustainability. As a district, we have a greater obligation to fiercely defend our mission, to make sure that all of our students, the students that have yet to be in our schools, have the same experiences that today's students have, that yesterday's students have. They can enjoy that Fairport experience, and I'm proud that this year, we got at that. I'd like to thank Mr. Stevens, Ms. Hill, and our building leaders and directors. There is many community members who have given incredible input this past year. There's been professional staff leaders who've been sharing and helping shape our, our vision as a district. I'm going to be reviewing the budget, and before I get into our three-part budget, you know, this budget season, the Board of Education continued to have a laser-like focus on making sure that we are being responsive to hold child programming, to make sure that all of our practices are aligned to the concept of developmentally appropriate practices. Whether you're a kindergartner, going through the middle school, or up into the high school, you know, we're, we're making sure that those experiences are alive and well. And this year, we're able to maintain our programming into next year. That was, that was an accomplishment and a priority for the board. Allocate resources to support the social, emotional, mental health and changing needs of our children. We engage school members, school community as a whole. Our district advisory council, some of you are on, you know, reiterated that this was a priority, and is at the forefront of our work. And we had to do some reorganizing to make sure that we aligned resources and leadership to these priorities, and I'm happy to say that we are, we're on a trajectory to achieving that. All in the name of being fiscally responsive and responsible to our, to our community. The plan, achievement, and success for all students. The board is constantly discussing what achievement means. What does it mean to be a Fairport student? And as we continue with our future planning, and we talk about our priorities, these ideas of success for all students, and achievement for all students, our board priorities, and hallmark experiences of Fairport. And it's been energizing and refreshing. Just past Saturday, we spent time together talking about these very ideas, and how we can continue to brand our schools and give identities around our future planning, and even our current budgets. Long-term, well, building awareness of budget process and fiscal environment. I think we've made great headway over the past several years in inviting people into our process. We have this concept of fiscal sustainability. There was a whole study group of 40 community members, which were part of a larger body of 105, who participated in this very idea, looking at our finances up close, helping us ask tough questions, making sure that we're being transparent, reflective, and giving our students the best, and being responsible for our only, I mean, our, our whole community in a very res- sustainable manner. Again, for that child, as I was pulling out of my driveway, who was playing in the street on the tricycle, who has yet come to our schools, we need to make sure that we're able to do that with clarity and purpose. We're going to continue to engage this group as we move forward. The Budget Communication Committee is a committee that we have throughout the year, again, inviting those people out there listening, or those people here in the audience to be a part of that conversation. That's when we can continue to look at our budget, our budget process, and our practices, and, and, you know, and, and again, that concept of being transparent. And of course, throughout the budget process, we've had multiple fiscal updates to keep our community engaged. The long-term objectives, manage budget growth and taxes, operate within our means. And I'm proud to say that this past year, the Board set some goals in the name of sustainability, of, you know, decreasing our reliance on reserves, and extending our reserves so we can continue to invest in the future of our students and our schools. Protect us against risk. Part of our district advisory council was a facilities management group, and I know that we're always trying to do what's best to protect our district, to put us in the best possible position, whether it be in health care, or managing the operations of our facilities. You know, it's, it's stewardship that, that we're proud to undertake, and of course, being fiscally sustainable for the future. Those are long-term objectives. I'm going to take us through the expenditures pieces of this budget, and then Mr. Stevens will be coming in to talk about the revenues side of the budget as we move forward. The three-part budget includes program, which includes instructors and our transportation department, everything that's related to our program. It's a 75% of our budget. The administrative component of the budget, which is all administration, which would include principals, central office, BOSI's costs, directors, you know, to, to manage and support the operations of our district. And capital, which would be our, our physical plants, our maintenance and operations of our, our budget. It's an overall 1.5% increase over prior year's budget. Last year, we were at 3.06% total. And again, you'll see that, you know, as we move along, there's, there's this commitment to being responsive and responsible, and to assure sustainability for the future. The program component, again, all things instruction. Costs associated with student instruction, support services, that would be our, our, how we support our students through our academic intervention services, through our elective programs and co-curricular program, et cetera. 75% of our budget. It includes salaries, benefits, and supplies, and that was a 1.4% increase from last year, from 1718 to 1819. This is a major point of advocacy. The Board of Education spends a lot of their time throughout the year, just not during the budget season, and along with myself and Mr. Stevens, we spend a lot of time talking about employee benefits and how we can manage the cost. We have commitments. We're, we're happy to abide by our commitments. However, we have responsibilities to our retirement system, to make sure that we can fund and support the workers that we have in our school district. The average contribution rate to the employee retirement system, or the ERS, will decrease from 15.3% to an estimated 14.9%. And then our TRS system, which has our largest portion, is a contribution rate from 9.8% to 10.6% increase. Again, these are points of advocacy. These are payments that we need to continue to be obligated to pay and happily pay. However, we're advocating for a reserve at the state level, or an exclusion, so we can honor our obligations. It's a cost of doing our work, and it's based on a percentage of our teacher salaries. That's what those costs equate to be. Our program budget. As we've been hearing, it's been an incredibly challenging budget season. We've had 28.5 FTE, or full-time equivalent positions eliminated, which we'll be talking about in a little bit. That's where you'll see these negative pieces, and you'll see some paraprofessional staff that have been eliminated or reduced through our Committee on Special Education process that makes recommendations on the ways that we support students. Again, you'll see the general instruction component is down negative 1.2%. You'll see our special programmings is up slightly. Special programs is everything special ed and ACED. It's our work with BOSI's. It's paying our special ed teachers' salaries and benefits. It's honoring the commitments to private and public programming that our students are needing more than ever. The range of needs that we're seeing are greater, and we need to be responsive to them, and, and we are honored and happy to serve them. The associated costs are .23. You'll see the library, media, and computer lab specials, you'll see a decrease of 1.78%, and that is because it was reflected in the loss of our computer TAs in all of our buildings. And I think it's important to note that we are still providing high expectations for 21st century learning. Digital citizenship will be alive and well, giving students the opportunity to code and interact with all sorts of different types of media. Buy a certified library media specialist. There'll be opportunities for library media specialists as we move along and develop the planning to be a part of that process. And I'll be looking forward to sharing that formally to the greater whole as, as we move along. You'll see a transportation department. There's 11.5% increase within that particular budget line. There's a capital project that will be starting in the spring to a new transportation center. Part of that cost, we'll be moving all the buses off that site, so they could do the work of the, of the construction and reconstruct. This was voter-approved in 2016, and we're looking forward to that work beginning. We're going to have to shuttle bus drivers from Monroeville to Land to the high school, and half of that cost, 300,000 of it is a normal operation, an operational increase, but half of that cost, another 300,000 of that 611, is to support the transporting of our bus drivers and staff to their buses throughout the year. There'll be staff dedicated to doing that, and it's, and it's, it's part of managing the project for sure. And you'll see that the employee benefits in our program component has gone up 3.5%. It's important that you also recognize that in that transportation line, you know, we receive aid, less any deductions calculated by the state. So, you know, we're spending that money, but it, we're looking to maximize our aid possibilities with that particular line item. K-5 enrollment, or K-12 enrollment, has been an important conversation, not just through the budget season, but throughout the year. We recognize that we are on a trajectory of declining enrollment. We're losing approximately 1.9, 1.8 to 2% a year, and it's most notably seen right here. You'll see our kindergarten class, as we have right now projected, 370 students coming in. And if you jump over here, this is what it looks like now, right? So, there's a differential, and that's being played out throughout our organization, and that's where you're seeing the decreasing enrollment. And that's what we're being responsive to. And that's what we're being responsive to. And as hard as it is to, you know, say goodbye to these incredible educators who have made incredible contributions, meaningful contributions, who make connections with our students, we have an obligation to be responsive and responsible to that, to that idea. And again, these trends are projected. We're looking to level out around 5,400 around 2025. So these trends will continue to decline. We're going to continue to measure twice and make sure that these numbers are true and, you know, we'll be updating them as we move along. But these are the projections that have been put forth. Certainly, you know, they've been true to the fact since I've been here, since I believe 2004. And we continue to decline. The Board of Education has made it a priority to have class sizes at lower levels at the elementary level. And if you've ever been in an elementary classroom, you know why. And there's windows of opportunities there. There's opportunities to make connections. I'm proud to say that our class sizes are still comparable to our Monroe County counterparts. They're credible, they're aligned to research and best practices. The expectation is that connections are made, that students and staff have opportunities to interact in meaningful, thoughtful ways. That idea has not diminished as we've been through the budget process. And you'll see that next year's numbers compared to this year's numbers are going to probably be, if not the same, pretty close to the same. You'll see the decrease in sections. Again, this is relative to our declining enrollment. Brooks Hill, there'll be no changes. Dudley, there'll be minus 3, Northside minus 1, minus 1 at JA, all in the name of declining Secondary. This is where you'll see more of the slight change. And again, credible, relative to Monroe County counterparts, opportunities for staff to make meaningful connections with our students. Students will still receive similar opportunities in all of our schools. There may be different ways that we, you know, provide media, digital citizenship, excuse me. There will be opportunities for students and the expectations that our students are 21st century prepared. And I'm looking forward to sharing that information. Class size standard of 24 to 27. Again, comparable, credible, aligned to best practice. There will be anomalies. We recognize that there are certain classes that you can't get that many students in and we're not going to compromise that. There's certain technology classes, art classes, you know, that require that we keep class sizes at lower numbers for the good of instruction, for the good and safety of the environment. The electives that have always been offered to students are still available to students. The co-curricular activities that have always been a part of a Fairport student's experiences are still a part of our students' experiences. The clubs, over 100 clubs, and the clubs are driven by research. And they say that those clubs are important because it connects students to something beyond the classroom. The Board of Education has made that a priority and it is still part of our budget. We've analyzed positions, we've repurposed positions based upon the priorities that have come forward to us through the budget process. Right now, we're in the process of reorganizing our administrative staff to align the leadership to the needs of the district, which have been clearly stated as the mental health needs of our students. We need to make sure that the right leadership is in place so our staff are aligned and there's a cogent message. And we're looking forward to presenting that as well. Here are the expense reductions as a whole. Anytime you see staff reductions, it's pretty hard. And it does, it's just due on the feeling tone of our school environment. And these have been incredible professionals. We respect their contributions. We respect them. We're also grateful for all that they've done. You'll see one addition there. There was a utilities reduction of $25,000. Mr. Stevens, you know, was making sure that he was analyzing our use of utilities over the past several years and made a $25,000 reduction in that line item. Of the 28.25 FTEs, six will be recalled back through attrition, six will be through attrition plus there'll be 12 recall opportunities, excuse me, anticipated to be brought back in the name of long-term subs or part-time positions. So some of that 28.25, when this is all said and done, will have an actual number on how many people are impacted. The administrative component of our budget. This is the costs associated with the administration of the district and each school building. It represents 11% of our total budget. It's the central office, it's our HR, our human resources, our curriculum and instruction office, our district office staff, it's our BOSI services. We have an incredible partnership with BOSI's, again, trying to maximize opportunities for students. You know, that's a great opportunity and the team does a great job managing that and our instructional directors. There's a 1% increase in that line item. And you'll see it broken down further. There's a negative 13.5% reduction. The Board of Education, our board clerk, our longtime board clerk, Karen Saunders, retired and the board brought back somebody at a halftime rate. Again, recognizing these are challenging times, but, you know, they saw it as their duty to make sure that, you know, they're being responsive. So you'll see a minus 13% change there. Central administration. In the business office, there's a minus 1.3% in the business office. There was a reassignment of duties that we were able to reorganize, do some position analysis, merge some duties and we were able to receive a reduction there. You'll see an increase to the general fund to ease our reliance on our tech reserves. That's where that 5.12%. The Board of Education wants to elongate the use of the reserves in the technology reserve that we have. And that commitment resulted in a increase of $164,000 to that line item. And that's why you see that reserve. And we'll be talking about the reserves in a little bit, but that 5.12 and other central services, we're taking that back into the general fund so we can continue to offer 21st century resources and tools from B-bots to, you know, Google Docs to iPads to coding opportunities. You know, the board's commitment is in this budget and you see that right there. There was a reduction in administrative support. There was a line item as we were going through last year's budget process that we removed, a $90,000 approximately nine item from the administrative line to support an assistant director of special ed. That was not realized, that was not part of our budget process. So that was a $90,000 reduction and you'll see that component right there. The overall employee benefits are 1.99%. Capital budget. The total capital component, again, this is our buildings and grounds, our maintenance and our operations has increased 2.61%. It's amazing that, you know, in spite of declining enrollment, in spite of, you know, this idea of cost containment, we still have incredible facilities that we need to take care of and manage as we move forward. And, you know, there's a commitment, there is a District Advisory Council, there's a whole group that spent their time talking about facilities and how we manage our facilities and their hopes and expectations and how we can continue to build upon what we learned in our District Advisory Council. So there's a real live entity, organization here that we need to maintain and that will be continued to be maintained at a 2.6% rate. You'll see that there's a debt service piece here. We're going to be transferring $400,000 from our debt service fund to offset the local share of our debt. We have capital projects from previous years that are coming due. And to ease the burden on our taxpayer, we decided that we transfer dollars from our debt service fund to ease the tax levy. Our school bus replacement. Each year, in order to manage our fleet, our fleet transports our students, our most precious commodity and prized possession. We need to make sure that our buses are safe and maintaining standards and having the latest and best in the industry has to offer. And we have approximate a 10-year replacement cycle. We're replacing 11 buses. Of these 11 buses, it's important that you recognize that six buses are 12 years old. So we don't stick hard and fast. The maintenance or the mechanical crew really does their best to stretch out the use of these vehicles. There's three buses that are 11 years old. There's one bus that's 10 years old and one bus that's nine years old. Again, we want to extend the investment, making sure that we're giving our students the right resources to get to and from school. The total after the trade-in is $1.2 million for the bus replacement. And the bus replacement is part of a capital exclusion, which supports the tax levy. Here it is broken down. You'll see the maintenance and operation at 1.2%. Again, that's where the minus $25,000 was in utilities that we reduced from that line item. The employee benefits did increase to 7.5%. It works in inverse relationship to our other areas in programming and, what's that called? Admin, thank you. So that's why that number is 7.5%. And the debt service, again, paying for our debt from previous projects, you'll see the We will be working at Brooks Hill in the future to make improvements to the HVA system that serves the library so our students and staff are comfortable in that environment. We recognize that the library media center is a 21st century learning space. And as we move forward, we're committed to ensuring that those environments are comfortable and accessible throughout the year. Total expenditures with programming at 1.4%, admin at 1.04% and capital at 2.61%. Totals to a 1.5, 6% increase for this year's budget. I am going to have Mr. Stevens come forward and he's going to talk a little bit about the revenue side of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robynzano, and good evening, everybody. The next piece of the budget we'll go over is the side that supports the expense side of the budget in terms of how do we pay for all of the expenses. Some major factors are listed on the screen in terms of the revenue. The two largest pieces being state aid and the property tax for the district. State aid accounting for approximately $40 million and the property tax, approximately $75 million of the total revenue side of the budget. Sales tax that we receive from Monroe County, other revenues such as facility use fees, interest earnings, admissions, and then our allocation of reserves and fund balance to offset the revenue side of the budget. So just a brief highlight of the adopted state budget in terms of how that impacted schools. So overall, an $859 million increase in school formula aids, broken down between foundation aid and expense-based aids. So foundation aid is the major operating aid, general operating aid school districts receive for Fairport. It accounted for approximately $449,000 in increase in foundation aid. And the expense-based aids are aids such as Brett mentioned, transportation aid, which is aid on our transportation expenses, our student transportation, BOSI's aid, any purchases we make through BOSI's, such as the increase of the $164,000 in the general fund to generate BOSI's aid by purchasing technology through BOSI's. Building aid would be aid related to the capital projects that have been approved in the past and construction complete and final cost reports in. So the $6.7 million or $6.9 million you saw on the expense side, there's building aid being generated on the revenue side. Our high-cost aid, that would be related to the expenses that we have in the current year for special ed students that could be at private placements, also in BOSI's placements, that those expenses generate aid the following year, as well as any in-district students where the districts met the threshold and costs to generate the aid. Overall, it's about a $132,000 increase for Fairport. I'd support to note that these are expense-driven aids. So, you know, the formulas that the state had in place, no formula changes to the aids, so it's continuing to generate as it has in the past. Couple of other pieces, school-level funding plans have been approved for school districts to have to submit to the state. There's a timeline in terms of how that rolls out for school districts across the state. And then the couple of big ones that were not enacted, were not adopted, were caps on building, transportation and BOSI's aid, which would have kept the aids that school districts receive in future years to 2%. And it doesn't change the reimbursement rate for our summer special ed programming. So the district receives reimbursement from the state for the summer special ed. If you saw back on a previous slide, we do a transfer to the special aid fund of $230,000. We receive aid on those expenses. So the state aid revenue, as I mentioned before, the foundation aid is the largest piece. So of the $40 million in state aid we receive, $23.5 million is related to foundation aid and then the categorical aids down below. The gap elimination adjustment, pretty soon this piece will probably fall off the slides. It's been zero for the, since the past couple of years. But there used to be a gap elimination adjustment where the state was taking money away from school districts to fund the state's fiscal gap. And over the years, you can see the negative number, beginning in 1112, started to decrease, which meant that the money was restored to school districts. So we had our largest restoration in 1617, which essentially served as an increase in revenue for the school that year. While it was certainly part of the foundation aid formula, what you would have seen here is that we would have had the $23.5 million and then there would have been an adjustment of a negative number, which netted the school's aid for foundation aid in previous years. So now, moving forward, what we see for increases in aid is the minimal foundation aid increase of the $449,000, you know, as opposed to a $3.2 million that was taking place in previous years. So it's just a brief history of Fairport's state aid. Again, the increases you see mostly over the years are the restoration of the gap elimination adjustment each year. BOSI's aid, there's a little breakdown in terms of the long-term plan in generating BOSI's aid with use of the tech reserve and as well as easing reliance off of the tech reserve. So in 2017-18, there was an expense of $1 million in 1819, there's a combination, excuse me, of $736,000 being requested to spend out of the technology reserve, combined with $164,000 of expense in the general fund for $900,000 in spending to continue the aid flow on a similar pattern as the million-dollar expense in 2017-18. In order to ease reliance off the reserve, that's why you see a slight decrease in the overall expense. In over years, eventually, the general fund is intended to be increased to support ongoing technology expenses and no longer be utilizing the tech reserve for this fashion. So the next piece is the property tax levy limit, most commonly known as 2% cap. As you heard in the library, public library presentation, there's a formula for the cap and here's what it looks like for the school district. So we start with the prior year tax levy, which is 1718's levy. There's the tax-based growth factor, which is set for towns, it's set by the state and it's the town growth factor. Then we have, we have to add in pilots, which are payments in lieu of taxes that we received in the prior year. Down below, we subtract out the anticipated pilots in 2018-19. You see exemptions in prior years, that's our, primarily our You see exemptions in prior years, that's our, primarily our capital. So that's the local share of debt. So what's that mean? It means the debt service less any building aid and aid on the bus purchases, which is a capital exclusion. That would be the exemption for the school district in the tax cap calculation. The allowable levy growth factor, so here's the, here's, you know, what the governor's talked about being 2%. It's the lesser of 2% or CPI. So this is the first year since the tax cap, the CPI's actually been greater than 2%. It was 2.13% this year. However, it's capped at 2% for schools. In previous years, it's been as low as .12%, meaning that the allowable levy growth would be much smaller than 2%. Then again, adding the capital levy back in for a limit with the adjustments and exclusions of 75.3 million or 3.21%. So the property tax revenue for the school is made up of the levy, as previously mentioned, and payments in lieu of taxes. Overall, an increase of $2.2 million or 3.1%. The tax levy for the school district is within the tax cap legislation, so it's tax cap compliance. So the reimbursements that folks receive from the state and towns related to the school district's tax levy would still be forthcoming in the future. The overall revenue for the school, combining the state aid with the property detection pilot and then adding in the other pieces such as sales tax and other. Sales tax, the major piece of that is our county sales tax, which is about $5.4 million. Other pieces would be BOSI's refund, our E-rate reimbursements, our facilities rental. We lease space out to BOSI's currently for four district-based classrooms, interest earnings, admissions, any prior year state aid adjustments if we receive those from previous years, such as related, primarily related to special ed reimbursements. The state can be a little behind on the processing of some of those forms, so we get those in the current year. The assigned appropriate in federal Medicaid, our aid related to the Medicaid programs. And assigned appropriated fund balance, this is the piece of the revenue side of the budget that the district assigns to the following year. So what it is, is a surplus in 2017-18 of revenues over expenses, actual revenue over expenses, being assigned to next year's revenue side of the budget. It's not really a true revenue, but it's fund balance being used to keep the tax levy respectful in the following year. So in order to maintain that, there needs to be a surplus of $3.9 million in future years as well to assist future budgets. The transfer from debt service fund, and this is where Mr. Provenzano mentioned the amount that the district's going to transfer from the debt service fund in order to decrease the tax levy overall. So without that transfer from debt service fund, it would allow the levy limit to be higher than 3.21%. But there's a plan in place of utilizing $400,000 over the next several years to maintain and manage the tax impact in the future. And then the assigned reserves are any reserves that we have assigned to offset, again, any expenses in the general fund. There's a couple of main reserves that this is related to. On the next slide, I'll talk about them, but it's our employer retirement system reserve and the tax surcharge reserve and unemployment insurance reserves. So this shows just the breakdown of, starting with the total budget and then looking at our revenues. Now, again, on the previous page, we talked about the revenues, but the assigned fund balance and reserves are not true revenues, so to speak, in our accounting methods. So the revenues is $123 million. The transfer from debt service fund is $400,000. And then the assigned reserves and fund balance is $5.2 million. And you see a million-dollar decrease from the assigned reserves and fund balance as a whole from the previous year. And that's part of the sustainability piece and long-term fiscal planning to not rely on the reserves and fund balance as much in future years. And you can see there's been a, there's been a steady decline, with the largest decline being in 2018-19 in terms of easing that reliance. So it's been, you know, a positive effort to decrease reliance on such reserves. And here's a breakdown of the reserves and fund balance, as mentioned previously. The assigned appropriated, we talked about the 3.9, the debt service fund is $400,000. And the other three reserves that are able to support expenses in the operating side of the budget would be the tax surcharge reserve. So that's to pay for any tax refunds that the district receives. Oftentimes, in the fall, there may be reimbursements to taxpayers related to STAR calculations. For example, somebody may be entitled to the basic STAR but not receiving it on their tax bill. So many of these add up in terms of the refunds for the tax surcharge. The unemployment reserve is any expenses related to our unemployment costs within the budget. So on the expense side of the budget, the budget's higher than $60,000, but we're utilizing $60,000 from the unemployment insurance reserve to support such expenses. And then the retirement contribution reserve is the reserve that may be utilized to pay for employee retirement system expenses. So those would be our non-certificated employees in the employee retirement system. The state does not have an approved teacher retirement system reserve, so you won't see schools with that reserve. But this is, this may be used to the, offset the employee retirement system costs. So overall, what does the tax levy increase mean? It is approximately, and again, this is based on current 1718 assessment. So as, you know, being a resident of Fairport myself, there's been, well aware of the assessed valuation changes. Any change in the assessed value, there's a town-wide reassessment taking place, any change in the assessed value will impact the projected tax rate. So what to do if the full assessments go up within the town, that would mean that the tax rate overall would decrease. There's an inverse relationship between the two, the tax rate increase would decrease. So instead of it being 2377, when those assessments are set in August, you know, we ensure that we've set the proper tax rate with looking at those assessments. So in previous years, the tax rate has typically been lower, the tax rate percent increase has been lower than the tax levy percent increase. And here's a diagram of, or a chart of that piece. So if you look back to 1617, here's a good example. The tax levy increase was 1.49%, but the rate increase was actually a negative .25%. So in that year, if you're a property owner that had your assessment stay flat, that would have meant you paid less taxes in 1617 than in 1516. So again, the assessment increase, which is anticipated to be larger than previous years because of the re-levis, will impact the tax rate and likely make it a lesser increase than the levy increase. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Provenzano to close up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Thank you for paying for all that. The budget is a reflection of our priorities and one priority and commitment that the Fairport Central School District has is to make sure that our students have access to instructional technology, make sure that our equipment, our software, our computers, our printers, our 3D printers, the way that we manage and support students, it needs to be state-of-the-art. You heard us talk a little bit about how we're trying to incorporate it more into our general fund by adding $164,000 to elongate and support this reserve. But we're also asking for $736,000 to withdraw so we can continue with our technology plan that we have to ensure that our students and staff have seamless and robust and expansive technology use. We'll be asking voters to vote on accessing these funds. We will also be asking students to establish a capital building reserve fund for the purpose of paying for, in whole or in part, the cost of additions, alterations or renovations or improvements to district facilities. Now, again, this past year, we had an entire year dedicated to this very idea. We had 3,000 people speak to the fact that this needs to be a priority. There was focus groups, there were surveys, we had 105 people, part of a district-wide committee that talked about our school environments. This is another way that we're trying to affirm that work by establishing this capital reserve fund, but we would need voter approval to do that. You'll be seeing those pieces on our ballot on May 15th. We would hope that you come out to join our parent from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM to make your voice count. It's important that you exercise that as part of your involvement in our community. Also, two Board of Education seats are up for vote. Dr. Judy O'Leary-Sargent and Mr. Peter Forsgren, our two board members who are currently serving on the board, will be running. Thank you very much and I look forward to seeing everybody on May 15th.